Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Milton School Committee meeting of September 3rd, 2025. If we can all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item is to approve the agenda for September 3rd. The one item that we need to take off, that will go on our next agenda, is for the Facilities Advisory Committee report. That meeting hasn't happened, so we'll have that on the meeting for September 17th. I don't know if anybody else has any other changes for approval?
Do we have any vendor warrants?
Yeah, I didn't sign it today, and I think we approved everything, so that's okay.
Is that on there? Yeah, so take that off as well. Great. Next up is public comment. So, in accordance with school committee policy, we welcome members of the community to share their perspective with us during public comment. We have set aside up to 15 minutes for this part of the meeting, and individuals may speak, excuse me, for up to three minutes each. While the school committee does not respond directly to public comment, there may be opportunities for members to address issues that are raised over the course of the meeting when relevant topics are on our agenda. We strive to engage in respectful discourse during our meetings and ask what the public comment speakers keep that in mind. Speakers should introduce themselves for the record. I think we have one person coming. You're welcome to come up.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Hi, folks. My name is Nick Ahern. I live in 49th Century Lane in Milton, have two daughters who are proud members of the schools, and thought I'd come tonight just to share a few thoughts, share essentially an email that I had shared with all of you, but just share it publicly as well, because I know I've spoken with a number of parents with similar concerns. So, without any further ado, my name is Nick Ahern, wanted to reach out on behalf of my two students, daughters Elizabeth and Madison Ahern. Elizabeth is grade 10 Milton High, Madison is grade 8 Pierce. My wife Sarah and I are longtime residents of Milton, 17 years living in the town. I also grew up and am a proud graduate of the Milton Public Schools. I'm a proud supporter of Prop 2.5 override since doing flyer drops with my parents in the 80s and leading right up to my advocacy for this last override here. My parents are both former lifelong public educators, and my mother serves as a teacher at Milton High School for over 20 years. My father in the Boston Public Schools for almost 40 years is a school administrator and teacher. For my wife and I, we have approximately 50 years combined teaching experience in public education, both of us as teachers, and me specifically as a school principal, for the last 15 years. I am also a town meeting member representing Precinct 6, and again, a proud supporter of the $9.5 million Prop 2.5 override. I mention our background only that my wife and I have a deep understanding of school budgets, and specifically have followed along with the planning of the Milton School budget, the importance of the override, and certainly the challenges that leaders face with increasing costs these days. That said, it's important for me to voice my concern for 116 students who do not have transportation, including my two daughters, and the lack of support we see trying to navigate this problem so far. The simple reality is, due to our jobs in public education, my wife and I are both out during school hours and are incapable of driving my kids to school. We live on Century Lane behind Colicott, but have had transportation to middle and high school for the last four years. When I wrote this, the school was set to start the next day, and I kept hoping that somehow some part of Milton Public Schools' transportation plan would change, unfortunately to no avail. As it stands right now, we are left to cull together a plan to try and get our kids to and from school safely each day, relying on the kindness of neighbors, friends, and hopefully some good luck as my wife tries to book it out of her school every afternoon, beat Milton traffic, and race to pick up my eighth-grade daughter. Here's where it's up to you, our school committee, to try and fix this. I understand the cost of adding additional buses, specifically $180,000, minus user fees, and that initially at least one more bus was part of the discussion in the $9.5 million override for the budget, but was later dropped. Again, you have the power to fix this. I am surprised, however, that in the most recent passing of the override, that transportation wasn't immediately a priority for all of our students. I could go on about missed opportunities that should have been explored, knowing that 116 kids would not receive transportation, but at this juncture, it seems a little bit like a moot point. Things such as exploring additional stops or bus routes from the MBTA, additional pick them up are just a few of the solutions that I could have offered, but there are more that I could certainly come up with if you're interested. What was done, however, was the budget was set, along with priorities for spending in the district, and what was left was the safe transportation of 116 kids to and from school each day. I brag about the Milton Public Schools, every chance I get, but I have shared the reality of not having transportation with friends and neighbors in the town and in neighboring towns. They are shocked by the shortsightedness and how we've planned for such a simple part of the school day as a safe comings and goings of kids. I'm asking you, in your role as school committee, to immediately prioritize the busing of these 116 students to and from school and make it a budget priority moving forward in future years as well. As a vocal advocate for the Milton Public Schools and one who has supported the schools for years, I hope to see you advocate for the parents and families who work in jobs like mine, and in general, who do not have flexibility of working from home or adjusting our hours to drop off or pick up our kids. At the very least, we are going to, if we're not going to receive transportation, right now, $635 is with the school department, and I said adjust slightly, but I hopefully not, that we have no word on where that is. I understand it's being held right now as, I guess, a retainer, but if we're not going to receive transportation, I guess I would use it for Uber going forward. That's where I stand. I want to thank you very much for your time, all of your time as well, but I truly hope going forward, I will tell you, I've spoken with a number of parents in my community who do not have busing, and I will just tell you all that it is something that has to be a top priority going forward. So, thank you all for your time today. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
No hands.
No hands. If there is anyone online who wanted to make a public comment, if you could raise your hand? Okay. We'll move on. The next item is the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Gia Siriò. This week, we're looking at the opening of school last Wednesday and Thursday for students, and more importantly, the last two days, we're very excited about the academic opening of school. At the last school committee meeting, we talked a lot about the operations side, our new enrollment numbers, our transportation waitlist that was just referred to by one of our community members, community schools, et cetera. Today, we look forward to Carla Cosson working with us to describe what we're doing about teaching and learning, so I'll let that start in a few minutes. Some of the, just the quick updates for folks to know, all of our school open houses are already on the calendar. September 4 is Pierce Middle School, September 9 is the Cunningham, the 11th is Milton High School, Tucker is on the 16th, Colicott is on the 18th of September, and the Glover is on the 25th, so we hope all families can get out to those schools for their open house. Also, from the business side of things, we have two meetings coming up this week related to our town work on the budget. One is the first meeting of the Budget Coordination Committee, which is on Friday, September 5th, and also on Friday, the 5th, I'll be meeting with Ed Gogart of the Capital Strategic Solutions. That's the group that is working with Town Hall and Nick Milano and the school department related to budget efficiencies and effectiveness. So, we'll be looking forward to reporting out from both of those groups as well. Other than that, we're very excited to have all of our students back and our staff back. Very much enjoy the environment of having schools start before Labor Day, so our students can get used to their teachers, know how to get around the building, and let that anxiety go down a little bit, have a four-day weekend, and then hit the ground running on Tuesday. I think it goes a long way in making a smooth transition, no matter what grade your child is in. So, glad to be in school, glad the kids are in the buildings, and excited for the school year.
All right. The next item is the Teaching and Learning Focus for 2025-26, the presentation.
Sure. So, I'm very happy to introduce Carla Cosson, the part-time interim Assistant Superintendent for Teaching and Learning. Carla is here with us three days a week and certainly works more than three days' worth of work on her Mondays and Fridays off. We're very, very happy to talk a lot about the work of teaching and learning, and I think that it's important for families to know that Carla is interim, I am interim, but we'll talk about our goals in our meeting that we had in this room with the leadership team. Because there is an interim team in charge of the schools this year does not mean that learning has stopped or is paused. You only do third grade once, you only do eighth grade once, you only do senior year once, and we need to make this a very, very effective and supportive and engaging school year for all students. So, I want to make sure we say out loud to our families that that will happen this year. We've already hit the ground running with our budget conversations and our operation work over the summer, but right behind that has been the teaching and learning part of our work. We've already met with our leadership team, we've already set our goals for the year, and we already have systems put in place to talk about teaching and learning with every curriculum leadership person and principal of the district on a regular basis to ensure that we're getting in classrooms, looking at what's going on in our buildings, talking about rigor, and talking about all the good things that we want to do for our schools for every single child. Instrumental in that work that we had done in August and have already made steps towards progress this year has been Carla's, the facilitation of the work that we're doing with our staff. The work that Carla and I are taking on is truly facilitating and setting big picture goals, but the 30, 29, 30, 31 professionals that work in the Milton Public Schools and have worked in the Milton Public Schools are driving the work. So, we're really thankful to partner with them. They've been doing amazing work already this year, and so Carla's going to share what that looks like, so you as a school committee and the families at home can get a look at what it's going to look like for the teaching and learning side of our work in the school department. So, welcome, Carla, and thank you.
Thank you. Very excited to be here. So, we'll start off, if you don't mind going to the next slide, to talk about the superintendent's goals, which I do believe the school committee has looked at before, and we kind of started here as a district in terms of teaching and learning, and it's been such a pleasure to start to get to know the instructional leaders here in Milton Public Schools who are so dedicated and knowledgeable and have such deep expertise, so it's exciting work. So, just reviewing the superintendent's goals, we have the focus on the classroom, and whenever we look at goals, we have to have a question that helps to guide our thinking. And so, focusing on the classroom, how do we ensure that our students are engaged in rigorous learning with high expectations and high support? So, that's a guiding question for us. Culture and climate. The question we need to ask ourselves is, how can we continue to create and maintain a culture of high expectations and support of students and staff in order to serve the goal of higher outcomes for students? Bottom left, you see budget stewardship. What is the question we need to ask ourselves? How can the district continue to support the goal of focusing on the classroom with the current budget? And then, we want to look at all of those goals through the lens of DEIB. How do we stay vigilant, excuse me, to the work of ensuring that all students are set up for success with sharp focus on students from marginalized groups who may not be achieving? So, we started here as an instructional leadership group to think about how do we attend to these goals that are not new and really reflecting on all of the good work that we already do in the district? Next slide. So, the full leadership team, as John mentioned, met on August 19th, and we met to determine how we would put these goals into action, and the target for that work is that it's interconnected and promotes high student achievement, as that kind of image that you probably have seen many times, everyone in the boat rowing in the same direction. That's something that we want to do in practice and really think about, how can we interconnect all the work that we do in order to really have an impact? So, we started with a high-level data review. We looked at MCAS scores, we looked at DIBELS and I-ready scores, and the whole group looked at data individually and did some reflection, and we had some questions. What does our student achievement data tell us? And from that data, what priorities should we focus on? The next thing we did as a group, and I'll explain more about each of these things in a minute, is turn those priorities that we surface into look fours, and I'll explain what that is in a minute, but how do those priorities show up in what happens in our classrooms, offices, and other student spaces? And then, we thought about, okay, if we, you know, we have these priorities that the data is telling us we need to think about, and we have look fours, which I'll explain what that means in a minute, how do we take that even further and think about our professional goals and making goals that I'm calling plug-and-play? Basically, they're pre-written and they already kind of align with the look fours. How can we help educators focus on look fours via professional goals? So, that's kind of the high-level thinking that we did, and you can go to the next slide. Thank you. So, here we are in this very room, doing this work together, and as you can see in the picture on the top, everyone is kind of thinking about the goals together, and in the bottom picture, you can see a bunch of sticky notes. And after some time of individual reflection and looking at the different data sources, we asked each other, what are the priorities? And again, to John's point, this is really the work of the team. John and I are facilitating, but the thinking is already there. So, the sticky notes on the bottom represent all of the different priorities that this entire team thought we should be thinking about in relation to the data. And then, what John and I did is kind of take all of the sticky notes that aligned, because there was a lot of overlap, and we came up, the group came up with the priorities that we wanted to focus on. So, next slide, please. This is just a graphic, kind of thinking about if we have the data coming at the top of the cone and kind of running itself through the cone, we are, we do the data analysis, we identify priorities, we define the look fours, and then we implement goals, and what are, what will happen is we will have improved student outcomes based on that trajectory. Next slide. All righty. So, here are the priorities that the instructional leadership team came up with that we are going to be focusing on this year. First, provide all students with robust and intentional Tier 1 instruction. Two, increase the use of data to inform instruction. Increase rigor through high expectations and high supports in the classroom. Four, take strategic action steps to ensure underperforming students achieve at grade level. And then, finally, continue to cultivate classroom and school climate and culture to lower absenteeism. I should note that your faculty and staff across Milton Public Schools are already doing terrific work, and what we are talking about and how we are positioning this is elevating what we're already doing. And so, this is already on the minds of our educators across the district. We're really just trying to focus on these aspects together this year. Next slide, please. So, what is a look for tied to our priorities? So, if our priority example is increase the use of data to inform instruction, a classroom look for means that if anybody walks into the classroom, they're going to see a teacher move, evidence of something, you're going to recognize it. And so, the classroom look for would be evidence of real-time instructional adjustments based on student responses. So, a student response is data, and so, a teacher in real time sees what's happening with student responses, understands that that's usable data, and it makes a shift. So, an example, a teacher uses an online polling tool for a brief digital quiz. As soon as the results are in, the teacher projects them and leads a class discussion about the most common mistakes or assigns a follow-up activity based on the data. So, this is just a slide to kind of help all of us understand what are we talking about when we talk about a priority going to a look for, and what is it really actually look like in a classroom? So, this is just one example of a look for. Next slide. So, our next steps, we've been talking about this as a district, we did that on the first day of all of our educators in the district, we kind of warmed the plate on this, and the next steps will be to review all parts of this plan district-wide on our next, our in-service day next week, and the full leadership is creating look fours to be shared with all faculty. So, all of our faculty will understand that these are the things we're going to be looking for, that everyone will be looking for when we're in classrooms, that are tied toward those priorities. Then, the full leadership is also building SMARTY professional goals, and that's a hyperlink if anyone's interested. Desi provides some background on how to create SMARTY goals for the evaluation process that educators may use to reinforce look force. And then, the full leadership will support educators in any professional development needs related to this work. So, I'm hoping what you see here is a through line that starts with really looking at data, data-informed work, then developing priorities, then developing how do we make this happen in the classroom, how do we look for it in the classroom, then how do we take it one step further? If we're already doing this, if we're always thinking about this, and this is happening in our classrooms, how do we double down on it through our professional goals and really think about making an impact in a variety of ways? So, hopefully, you're seeing the through line there, and we're excited to take on this work. The instructional leadership team across the district is really united and thinking through how to do this in a way that helps all educators move the needle for every single student. So, that is the overall update for teaching and learning in this moment.
So, Carla, thank you. I want to reiterate a few things that I think are really important. Normally, when you start a school year, you see big picture goals, and you don't see them connect from the superintendent's goals to the principal of the building, to the teacher in the classroom, and the student. And we're trying to throw, show you, to Carla's point, that through line, and to me, it's like when you build a building and the elevator is the first thing built, and that's the shaft that goes up and down. The superintendent's goals are the district goals, the principals and the leadership team have to buy into what those are, and then actually operationalize those for what it looks like in their building and what it looks like in the classroom. And then, those classroom teachers need to be on the same page of what they're doing and how it relates to those goals, and what we are all hoping to see in classrooms, connected directly to the classroom in their educational goals. So, that was just one example of trying to show that this is going to be happening immediately. This isn't something we're going to talk about for a semester or a month or three months. We are going to be in classrooms next week. We're working with our educators at our first early release day on September 10th, and then we'll have our one-on-one meetings with them from an evaluator standpoint to an educator standpoint to talk about how they want to work in this direction, and we're not asking them to do anything different than they are. Staff are already working hard on Tier 1 instruction, they're already using data to inform their instruction, they're already looking at ways to, you know, create strategies that impact our marginalized students that need extra support who aren't achieving. So, we're just asking them to focus on that, we're all going to do it together. We want to, you know, be visible in schools so we can validate their work, ensure that they feel supported in the work, and then learn what's going on so we can actually support the work moving forward. So, we want to take the classroom and the focus on the classroom and make it the central work that we do this year related to teaching and learning. So, we welcome any questions and any thoughts about this process that we can continue this dialogue.
I can go first. You can just stare at each other, too. This is great, thank you for this, and it's great to see this, as you said, Superintendent Phelan, come together, you know, week one. It's great to get started on that foot. I have a couple of questions. One, about the priorities on Slide 6. I'm just curious if you could say a few more sentences about where these particular priorities came from? I assume they were identified because there's some gap between where we are now and where we want to be, but just if you could just contextualize that a little bit. And then, on the look fours, I don't know, this example is helpful, and I don't know where else, what other look fours might look like. It sounds like that's part of the next work. I would really encourage the district to think about look fours not only in instructional moves, but in student experience with content. So, like, for example, in this, where the teacher uses the online polling tool for a brief digital quiz, I would also want to look for, is that quiz standards aligned? Is it testing at a level of rigor that we feel good about, whatever the right thing is?
Sure. Sure. So, let me back up for you. So, looking at the priorities, so, using the data that each of our leaders had, they thought through, what is it telling us? And generally speaking, all of the data is online and available for public. It's MCAS data, it's I-ready, it's DIBELS, and it's telling us about generally our math and our reading achievement, and what you would see generally over the last five years is a pretty kind of flat line. And so, that was kind of the first thing that folks started to think about. They also looked at a presentation that was given, I think in '24, on the MCAS data and some kind of highlights around that, that helped us understand that some subgroups were not performing, and that's something that we need to think about. And just the idea of using data was something that, you know, the leadership team was saying, we need to do more of this, and so, that became a priority based on just looking at the data alone. And in terms of our, the priority number four, take strategic action steps to ensure underperforming students achieve at grade level, that's something that the leadership team really thought about, you know, we really need to think about what are those action steps? We're trying to do things every day, but how can we work smarter, not harder? And how can we really be active in our classrooms to help underperforming students? So, that's something that the team really wants to think about and provide teachers with some more, a kind of broader menu of action steps for that. Provide all students with robust and intentional Tier 1 instruction, that really speaks to the students who, on our assessments, are showing lower performance and trying to make sure that all students have the robustest instruction in the classroom. and trying to make sure that all students have the robust instruction in the classroom setting. And so, they all came from the data pieces that told us a story, and where, where the teams saw overlap, you know, multiple team members said, I think we need to focus on Tier One. That's how it became a priority, because, you know, multiple folks were seeing the same thing, and that's how we identified it. Does that answer your question?
Yep.
Can you define Tier One?
Tier One is basically when you're thinking about the different levels of instruction for students. Tier One is a baseline that all students should have a robust instruction. Tier Two and Tier Three depends on the child's needs, and they may be taken out of the class for additional instruction, but Tier One is for all students.
And we, what we saw in the data was that the, the growth overall needs to, to move forward. And so, we, we pride ourselves in taking a lot of time to make sure that our underserved students are getting what they need and taking action steps for that. But we're also saying out loud that everybody needs that kind of attentionality. We, we need to see growth for all of our students. So the first three priorities are, every single student needs a robust classroom-based Tier One instruction experience. Everybody does. And everybody needs to use data to help inform those teaching moves and what's happening in the building, and we should be expecting rigor for every single child in the district. We want to see everybody move from this bucket up higher to up higher, no matter what bucket they're starting in. So, and then, but when we do that for all students, it's our obligation to also make sure that we're, you know, equally, if not extending ourselves, to first of all, who's not achieving. So this is in an order of most important to least important, and it was really important for the leadership team, they were thinking, should we represent these priorities in a circular manner? Because they felt that they were all number ones. There was really no number five. We just had to list them by using numbers. So they really wanted to talk about what all students need to, to have growth happen at every level of the district, but also target where students aren't learning and take action steps in that area. And it really felt like the, the leadership team wanted to be more proactive in, in taking action steps versus discussing. They really wanted to get in classrooms and talk about teaching and learning. And so, we're excited that they have that good energy, and we're just facilitating what they saw in the data. And I think one of the pictures you saw was the 85 yellow stickies that were all over the wall. Those were the discussion points that were brought these five priorities to light.
Thank you.
Sure.
Quick question, I think. I really appreciate the presentation, love the focus on Tier One instruction. Agreed wholeheartedly with Nathan in terms of, obviously, the focus is not just on teacher moves, but also the quality of the curriculum and the rigor of the tasks that kids are being asked to master, right? Learning is based upon the task. I think a question I have on the look fours is like, who are the people doing the looking, and how often are they able to look? Because I think that's, that's the thing that when we've had, you know, school leaders in here, I've tried to consistently try and figure out, like, how many people are they, you know, observing, like, how many, not just from an evaluation standpoint, obviously, that is important to give teachers feedback, like, once a year through that model, but also just from an evaluative, just developmental standpoint of getting into classrooms, seeing their practice, giving them feedback, coming back, seeing how they implemented that feedback, et cetera, et cetera, and doing that repeatedly. I know you've talked a lot about getting in the classroom, but can you give us a sense of like, do we have a goal of how often we're trying to get into every teacher's classroom and observe?
So we will, Carla and I already have worked with every school, we'll be in schools between once and twice a week. So there'll be one or two days dedicated where we will be in schools, walking with principals, getting into classrooms, talking about teaching and learning. And from an evaluation standpoint, that's my observation of that principle. So I'm modeling that observation, evaluation process by using that moment to evaluate their discussion about what they're seeing in the classroom, and we're having a dialogue about what's happening in the classroom that we think is great, that's best practice, we ask good questions, so we're talking about it in observing classrooms and then going back and debriefing after. So that will happen every week in a different school, if not in two schools per week. There will be times where, in our meetings that we have with our secondary leadership teams, principals and coordinators, and our elementary principals and coordinators meetings, which we will have every other week, where we'll start to talk about the themes and what we're seeing in those classrooms, and talk about whether that justifies any PD that we might want to have for staff, or anything that we want to talk about to enhance that process. So, in terms of the activity, we will be, Carla and I will be in schools every week. We will be walking with principals, we'll be inviting Unit B members. If we want to see something through the lens of special education, we'll ask Daniel, what more to come with us to be an observer? If you want to look at something that's literacy-based in third grade, we'll ask Captain Roche to come with us. If we have a math thing that we want to see and pay attention to and prioritize for that learning walk, we'll ask Brian Selling to come and do that work with us. So we always have that content-based view, the building-based view, and the district-wide view as we start to walk the buildings. This is not going to be as sophisticated as the learning walk process that I think we all know about in our, in our graduate work of having teams and doing it in a formal way. That takes a little time to set the protocols for that, set the teams up, and we just didn't want to take the time to set it up and not have it get off the ground until January, February. We wanted to just get in the classrooms and do a modified version of that. So, we will be in classrooms weekly, we'll be having those discussions weekly, and they'll be followed up in different curriculum meetings that we'll have every other week with all the leaders in the district.
I mean, I think that's great, and I love the, the focus, again, from even the network office, modeling that behavior. I guess a follow-up question is just from the, like, school lens, is there some general kind of goal or direction that y'all are providing to principals, or assist principals, or Unit B, you know, director folks who, in terms of how often they are going in and looking at, again, all kind of on average, each teacher? Like, I guess if I'm a teacher in the district, how often can I expect to get observed, get feedback, have that kind of debrief, and then throughout this course of the year, beyond just my kind of formal evaluation?
So, the formal evaluation process will be a robust observation process. You have to go in X amount of times before you do the formative in June, I mean, in January, and then several more times before the June summative meeting. So, there's a good five or so observations that you'll have just through that lens. How many of the individual classrooms we get to and principals get to as part of the learning walk will be, you know, will be random in nature, or targeted in nature, depending on what we're looking for. What I really hope is that we utilize and leverage the evaluation system as a way to make sure that we're all staying accountable to each other of getting into classrooms and prioritizing that conversation about teaching and learning. So I can't give you a number. I can only say that we're prioritizing our work of being visible and present in classrooms, working with teachers, talking to them about what works, and observing, and giving good feedback on a regular basis.
Yeah, I, I hear that. I think, I guess my just final point on that is, I think having some type of goal of, you know, five times a year, I think for a very veteran-experienced, high-performing teacher, like, that's probably good, and then like, you know, really want to pull them out and have people observe them, that are other teachers, things like that. But for new teachers, right, like, do we have, trying to establish that? I don't think we have that. I don't think we've had that, you know, before you. But just trying to figure out, like, you know, what is our goal? What is the direction to our school-based administrators from y'all's kind of level to say, hey, we, we need y'all in the classroom, the work is happening in classrooms, we should be trying to visit classrooms, you know, X number of times, setting some type of goal. I generally think it's helpful to then hold yourself accountable and say, like, ooh, I actually only gotten four classrooms, I only saw four teachers this week, versus like, hey, we want to see, I don't know, throughout, random, 10, 15, whatever the number is, I think is just helpful. Because I completely agree with your point of getting in the classroom, seeing what is happening in the classroom is the only way to know what is happening with learning until you get the data dump, and then you don't have the context of the data dump unless you've been in the classrooms to see, like, oh yeah, I saw they were struggling with that skill.
I, I think that for our building principals, they'll be doing their walkthroughs, just as they always have done, of getting into rooms in a less formal way, seeing what's going on in class, walking through, being visible. We, we haven't decided on a number yet. And our, our worry is that we have reduced three Unit B positions this year. So, when we're looking at the evaluation chart of how many folks each administrator will have to evaluate, it's going to be somewhere in the twenties.
Yeah.
So, seeing every, seeing every non-tenured teacher, which is a teacher in year one, two, or three, and prioritizing getting into those rooms, especially September through November, will be the priority. And then, getting into our tenured teachers' classes throughout the year. If you calculate 20 people that I'm responsible for by-
Five visits.
Five or six visits a, a teacher, that's different in classrooms a lot. And then, they're following up with one-on-ones after those meetings, and they're talking about teaching and learning. So we, we, we don't have an exact number, if that's what you're asking for, but we feel like the process, we're trying to leverage something that they're supposed to be doing anyways, as the way to get them in the room and have those hard discussions that's already in place. And that should be done with fidelity and, and quality each time they visit.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I appreciate the questions that have been asked so far. I'd also just like to voice my appreciation for the goals that you've set. I think I am thankful for the clarity and concision of the presentation of the goals. While it's all complex work that will be taking place this year, I think it's helpful to be so clear and focused from this very beginning point. And I don't recall having this level of clarity this early in the year. And it's helpful, of course, for the conversation we will go on to have about the school committee goals. I really appreciate the inclusion of the DEIB focus. You've used the word accountability, and I think we've had that discussion, and I, I really like to see threaded throughout this expectation that we will be moving the needle through these goals, look fours, and the processes that you're setting up with, with the leadership team. So, I'm just feeling thankful and, you know, hopeful for what will come from this. And I really also want to affirm, reaffirm the appreciation for your modeling, the leadership from where you sit and, you know, putting yourself out there in the buildings and sort of reinforcing this culture. I, I think it's necessary, and you're doing it with this focus and clarity, but through that sort of stance of support and looking for things that, ways that people may need more support, which they can then access. So, I, my only question is, I don't think for now so much, as, you know, when we look at our goals, talk that through, I know we're still sort of formulating what the cadence will be of conversations we have as the year unfolds. I'm sort of interested to imagine, like, how we as a school committee will be able to stay abreast of the progress that you're seeing through this work. And, you know, I'm, I'm just imagining different ways that could look, and one thing that I'm, I found myself wondering during the presentation involves the collaboration between curriculum directors and school leaders. We, as a school committee, have really often, that work has appeared siloed to us. That doesn't mean it has been siloed, but in terms of how it has been shared with us, it has not really been, I don't think, as integrated as what you're describing in the initial sort of setup of the year. So I'm just kind of, I'm just wondering about that, and not for right now, but maybe as we proceed to set, you know, whatever the discussions are going to be happening quarterly, or whatever it might be where we're receiving updates, I'm realizing how interesting that might be to have, to, for us to be able to learn from those leaders, like, when we have those opportunities in a kind of synthesized way, because their work clearly is so synthesized. And I just appreciate, I appreciate all this, because the shorter, more focused the presentation, like, the, that can make it look easier said than done, you know? But I think it makes, it's actually harder to get to that point. So, I really thank you for all the work you've done over these weeks, and both of you having just gotten here and really hit the ground running. I think that's what this shows me, so, appreciate it.
Thank you. We're really thankful for the energy that the full leadership team brought to the meeting that we showed you in pictures, already where we all decided what was exactly going to be presented in every school in the first day by the principals, and how that was supported by the curriculum leadership, how that will roll over into next Wednesday's early release day, and how that will roll over into everybody's first meeting with their evaluator. So, the work of really creating teams with our principals in our leadership, curriculum leadership is really, really important. I think Carla got off to a great start in building trust on our retreat day. And so, keeping everybody on the same page through systematic meetings, and those meetings will have goals, and those meetings will have report outs, and we'll be asking good questions. And, you know, several artifacts that we could bring would be the agendas for those, how, you know, we're meeting every month, it's every other week essentially, and making sure that we're keeping that bigger group on the same page, because they're the ones who have been doing the good work, they're the ones who just want a little bit of facilitation and support, and they'll be continuing to do the good work. So this is their district, this is their work, these are their priorities. They are really good. I want to make sure the community knows that your curriculum leadership folks and your principals are very high-functioning, high-quality professional educators who have great ideas, who are really ready to be actively taking part in this work with kids and teachers. And so, we're, we're facilitating that. We have a, this is a really nice job for us, right? Because we get to facilitate everything that they need support with and how they want it directed. So, it's, you, you will, I hope to be able to share with you, Lizzie, as well, some way of capturing that good energy and how that's been brought forward to every month of the school year this year.
Thank you.
This is awesome. A lot of you shared similar comments, so I won't get into it too much, but I really appreciate looking at the data, finding out, you know, because we've looked at data presentations, this is my fourth year looking at data presentations, and I really appreciate that you've kind of identified what needs to change and listed those, and now you're, have a plan to get there. And that's what I'm looking for, and I'm psyched that you're hitting the ground running. This is incredible, and thank you for making it so easy for us to understand. You know, it's very simplified, it's, these are the steps, and this is how we're going to get there, and you're going to share progress with us, you know, every so often. And I'm excited, and I'm so excited that the, the larger team at MPS is excited about this, and they're collaborative with this process, and you could just see it. And I'm really thrilled about this year, so, thank you, great work, both of you and your team.
Good, good, good. And just to kind of follow up on that, I will say, it's, these aren't new things, these are things that have been happening in this district. We're really just digging in, digging in on things that they identified as priorities. So, that's the really good news, is that a lot of this great work has already been happening, we're really just digging in now, so.
It was the last, I was, one of the things that I really appreciate, and John, you've noted this, and Carla, you saying that as well, is I think it's this sense of, going to probably make a board, but proceduralize or, or give some structure and some consistency to what's being done, how it's being looked at. I think it, you know, for anybody in any role that you're in, having a clear understanding of what the expectations are is really important, and I think it makes your job difficult if you think you're doing the right thing, but you're, you know, you might be doing something different here than someplace else. So I think this idea of consistency, providing a framework or providing sort of those look fours, those, giving, giving people a framework that you're working within, you know, within this, within that framework, I think is probably really helpful, and allows them to sort of focus then on doing the work, not figuring things out, right? You get to just move forward and do what you love to do and do what you know how to do. So I really, really appreciate that. And I, I think the other thing is, and you've noted this before, but I think this idea of rigor for everyone, so regardless of, if you're getting a modified curriculum, if you're in an AP class, whatever it is, the goal is for every student to meet their potential, right? And so, we really want to push that. And so, I love that idea that it's, it's not just one area of focus just about AP or just about something, it's that recognizing that we want everyone to move to that, as you said, like, move to that next level. And I, I think that that's great, and using that idea of data, that data doesn't have to be DIBELS, it can be a pop quiz, it can be a hands-up, did you get it? It can be like, that idea of being able to then take that information and say, oh, in that moment, I think I need to tweak this, or I need to change that. So I think that that's great for, for everyone. So, thank you for the work, and I, I echo that, I appreciate a simple presentation that's, that's, that we all can-
In the last group, we didn't think, I think, well enough as the teachers, right? So the teachers are doing this stuff, so- So the teachers are doing this stuff, so we want to focus on those practices with them, share those, model them. And teachers might say when we give these model goals, I'm already doing something like that, here's my goal, and that's okay. We're just, we're just trying to provide a model example. And if folks are already doing this work and they're targeting tier-one instruction or they're targeting the underperforming students in their class, and they already have a goal written for that, that they have been focusing on with maybe a grade-three team or the three math teachers in seventh grade, then keep doing it. You know, we're here to support that work. That's, we expect people to have the work already moving and have goals at work for them in the group that they're working with and the students they're working with. So these are just guides, again, to facilitate and move the work for the staff and the students. And also talk about children, talk about learning, and talk about not only good engaging experiences, but having students come home happy, tired with homework, and a little hungry. That's what every parent wants, right? And then they get up and they wake up and they're ready to go, and we're all still half asleep, but they're ready to get up and go to school the next day. That's what we want for every family. So that's the simple way to put it.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. The next is the review of the proposal for the high school trip to France and Switzerland. This is not a vote, we're just reviewing.
Correct. So this field trip request is a first read, just a way for you all to see that this is coming down as a trip that potentially will be in place for the spring of '26. The sponsor of the trip also said that there may be her, that she may want to do this in the spring of '27. And the reason why I say that is that, not that I want to change practices, but if we think about this read of a trip where obviously the objectives are there to bring out world language curriculum to real life, this trip would take students to several different countries. Over in Europe, Paris, in Switzerland, it's open to all students in any world language The safety of the students will be approximately 10 to 1 in a ratio. The proposed budget is, the worry of mine, is $4,500 to $5,000 per student. And the reason why I brought up the year, it's really helpful for our families if we can let them know a year in advance if their child would like to go on a trip like this. So I'd like to create a cycle where we're giving these trips in a first read to the school committee and to families in a year prior to. And in that way that people can think about if they want to go and talk to their children about it. And then they have a year to take part in any fundraising activities the school might do, raise some money in their own, get that part-time job over that summer in order to help support that number, so we can have more families take part and have access, maybe go up a little higher if people have more time. So Claire Younger is a teacher here at the high school, she's open to doing this in the spring of '26 or spring of '27. She took that feedback very well and thought about it and said, that's a lot of money. So this trip, if it goes in April of next year or April of '27, would be during April break. Depending on flights, it might cost us one day of school either prior or after. And the event that she has already run in previous years was done in a way that had very good structure, very good support, very good safety, and the kids were engaged and enjoyed themselves. So again, this is something that we're putting forward, it has the support of Xena Hamada, who's the director of World Languages, and Karen Cahill, the high school principal. And if they want to run it this year, we'll have them bring back this proposal for a vote at another time in the fall.
One question, I'm wondering, based on what makes a lot of sense that you were saying about planning ahead, do we know, or it's just something I'd be curious to know, like when do students find out if they have a spot on the trip? Do you know what I mean? Because it's talking about a waiting list. So just wondering how far ahead is the process to sort of apply, sign up, or what have you, and find out if you have that opportunity or you're on the waitlist?
So one of the reasons why I'm in favor of making it a year before is so everybody can know that information a lot ahead of time. So I think when the organizers of these trips have to discuss waitlist of who gets to attend, it's based on the ratio of adults that they can recruit and attend the trip, so they can ensure that they have that ratio of one chaperone per 10 students. Normally, I don't think that we've really ever seen a waitlist, at least in my experience in Milton a long time ago in my previous district. But I think people would need to know very soon if they wanted to do an April trip. So I'll be meeting with Claire and Xena Hamada and Karen to find out if they want to invest in this year. And if they do, I'm going to probably turn this back to you in our October meeting for a vote, so we can notify those students as soon as possible.
Okay. That's a good point.
And she did have a plan of introducing this to the school committee in May and June, but we had a busy May and June, and she didn't put it on the agenda because she felt like it wasn't appropriate at the time.
Sure.
Just a couple quick, the, do we have to reapprove inner, because I think we've approved some field trips before, right? Once they're approved once, are they approved? Or do we have to reapprove them every, I just don't know, policy-wise, what they do?
I'm not sure what the policy is, but my practice has always been to bring every trip.
Every out-of-state, every out-of-country trip, every year back to the.
Anything in-state, you don't have to bring. And, you know, I have some ideas about a cycle for that that may not need to be approved, but we'll, I'll try to introduce that if it's the right time to do so.
Yeah, I was thinking just to your point of like planning for this and any other trips, right, like the eighth-grade DC trip, or I feel like there's been other international trips that, like they, I think the middle school French goes up to Quebec, yeah. So like just some type of general like overview, hey, here are all the different trips that we do at different age groups and the kids who are eligible, because your kids may or may not be, just as like a one-page of our families, to your point, to like send that out at the end of the year, beginning of the year, whatever it might be. So families kind of know.
Or am I?
So that's the kind of cycle that I'm actually talking about, Mark, that that way when you walk into the middle school, you'll know that there'll be potentially a trip if you're in the French immersion program. I believe Xena Hamada is planning a trip for us Spanish and Latin students this year. If we have traditional trips, we should just create that menu and anchor it in one big boat and annualize it, so people know the drill and the school committee can do it. And then when I get into sixth grade and I look at my six through 12 trajectory, wow, I can do that in eighth grade, I can go to DC, and wow, I have a trip that I can take advantage of any of the four years that I'm at the high school, either going to Europe or going. And I just think it makes it easier for families to plan, and they'd actually get excited about some of the programming that's offered. So I'll work with the high school and middle school principal to see if we can get that up and running.
That'd be great.
I'm just looking at our policy that was included in the folder, and it does seem open to interpretation whether the trip needs to be approved once to be replicated or needs to be approved annually for the same trip. So, I mean, definitely appreciate being able to hear the information, but that doesn't necessarily seem clear to answer your question, Mark.
You mentioned the cost of the trip. How does that work for families? Is it, like, is there any sort of financial assistance? Like, how does that for?
I think that the financial assistance is limited, quite frankly, which is always a concern of mine. I think that the chaperones and the sponsors of the trip like to try to provide some fundraisers for students to collectively get together and raise money together. Sometimes the groups that run the trips give scholarships, so if we're using EF, which is one of the major ones in the country that's based in Boston, they might say for every 20 students, we'll give one scholarship or two half scholarships. So there's opportunities for that. But my main worry about this, and has always been for trips, is the access and the money and folks being able to afford it. So that's why I like to give time and space in order for families to prepare if they can, they can do so.
I think the other thing, too, is passports. I mean, not, it's sort of a last-minute decision, making sure that students have the passport. You know, I think there are things that, logistically, that you don't necessarily think about, and then if the time gets closer and then you've got to, because oftentimes they'll say, before you apply, you have to have a pass, like we have to know that you have a passport. So if that's part of the decision factor, then you need to back it up even further.
Right.
But yeah, the cost is definitely, and maybe having a longer lead time, there is more opportunity for fundraising or whatever to bring the cost down for kids.
Is it similar to like, I think for the DC trip, like PTO helps, like has fundraisers and you can, parents can donate or sponsor or like things like that?
I think they do that for the DC trip because they try to get every single eighth grader to go, and this is just really a choice program at the high school. And I think Bill has done a nice job of trying to get every single eighth grader to go. And I have to say that when I was here part-time in May, Bill prided himself on going to the DC trip because he had three or four students that had traditionally not been able to access trips in some of our sub-separate programs that went. And he wanted to be personally with them to make sure that they had a good time and they were well taken care of. And so that, that really was significant outreach for him to be able to do that. So that's what the eighth-grade trip, I think, does, but I think these high school trips are a little different.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Nope. All right. We're on the chair's report. So if I could just switch the order only because I think, if that's okay, the discussion will take a little bit more time than the review of the school committee, subcommittees, and advisory committees. So in the folder was our updated list of those who are on the subcommittees and advisory committees. The newest one is the Milton Budget Coordination Committee. To date, there has not been any application for that from a citizen standpoint, so I reached out to Lynn today, and she confirmed that. The one position that we do need to, we can't vote on it today, but we did get an application for the Climate Action Planning Committee representative. That's in the folder. We have gotten one. So we just received that today, so if you want to review that, if people had questions around the applicant, we can do that now. I think it's just a good opportunity to address it. Go ahead, Mark.
The only thing that seemed different this time versus the last time is, like, last time, I do feel like we got resumes where like it said a bit more people's background. And this person provided some of that, you know, much lesser extent, kind of within two sentences, but, and it's the only application, so maybe it doesn't matter, but it just, it did feel like last time we had a little bit more information on like qualifications and what kind of this person's professional expertise was, would contribute to this group. So that's the only thing I wanted to flag, but I did see where it said, you know, a resume is optional within the application, so.
Yeah, I think that's feedback I would provide on the application. I think I, I don't, just not familiar with the individual. There's, I have no information to base my own, like, support of that individual to represent the school committee. Based on filling out the application, you know, in good faith, I think, I just, I will just say I'm feeling, I just don't know, like, how, how I would be able to honestly vote on that. But that's not feedback on the applicant so much as the process.
Right.
Well, I guess my question is, I assume the applicant isn't applying for the school committee rep, right? On the town website?
I think, to your point, Mark, you know, I recall previously there was not just further context and information about the individual's qualifications, but also their desire to specifically represent the school committee on that committee and an interest in that angle. So, yeah, I'm not quite sure. I think I genuinely appreciate anybody who volunteers to serve on any committee in our town. I mean, obviously, we are all volunteers, and we know that that's nothing to be taken for granted, but it does seem very minimal. There is no substantial information other than a couple of professional qualifications shared which don't directly pertain to climate change. So that just raises that question for me. I don't know what's possible as far as if there's any way to seek further information. If, Amanda, there's any way you could check with Alex, who chairs the committee, just to confirm whether he, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to make it, make anything difficult, but I also just hesitate to set a precedent for myself where I'm voting to approve someone representing with no information about the qualifications or, like, in, sort of interests of this person in the work, to know how they would then in turn represent the school committee in that work.
Right.
Yeah, I very much agree. I think if there's a possibility of getting, going back to the candidate, ask them to provide a letter of interest, you know, one page, I think that's, now that you say that, I think we did receive that from.
And a resume as well. But again, I'm not, I'm really not, this, I'm not sharing a criticism of this individual.
No.
It's because they have, they have just filled out the minimal information that's asked. So I would be interested in maybe giving feedback to the town about perhaps making that resume not optional. I don't know.
Yeah. The one question I had is, and I, it's not clear on the form, so it says Community Advocacy Select Board. Does that mean the select, what is the board or person next to it? Because I would have thought that it would say, school committee from the standpoint of a representative. Do you see so at the top where they, or does that mean that this board reports up? I just hadn't seen this form before, so.
Yeah, I assume it's because, yeah, the board reports to the select board.
Okay. Where they manage the process. Only, the reason I ask is, is it clear that you are representing the school committee by filling this out? Do you know what you are?
Well, a school committee rep. I mean, that's, that leads to a question of perhaps, yeah, perhaps this individual was applying to be a select board appointee, and they, maybe they appointed other people, I'm not sure.
Right.
Like, maybe nobody applied specifically to be the school committee's representative.
Okay.
Which would explain why there hasn't, but.
I can, so I can reach out to both, to see about getting more information, and then also just some clarity around that piece of it. I can reach out to Nick on that, and then Alex on the other piece and see if there's the ability to reach back out to get more information.
So I know last year we had several applicants, and this year there's only one. What is that process, like, how is that, do we put it out to get, do we need to have a minimum of a certain amount of applicants? Like, how does that work? Or do we have to appoint someone from the school committee? Like, what is that, I guess?
We could appoint somebody from the school committee. I think we determined, that's something I don't think we've talked about, actually within this round, is a fair point, but it was, yeah, two years ago, I don't think we did it last year.
Yeah, two years ago, yeah.
Kept her on. She agreed to stay. I don't assume, I don't think we have anywhere within our policies that I've seen or within this that says like you need a certain number of applicants. So I assume we could appoint the one applicant, or we could not, and then it is left unfilled. I don't, I think to the point maybe of reaching out to Alex, like, how much do they need just extra people to do the work at this point? You know, are we really hindering them by this? Or, you know, if we leave the seat unfilled right now because we want to drum up some more interest, is that okay?
Or, yeah, really just, I'm wondering, does he have any more information about this individual? individual based on this individual has attended the presentation, attended a meeting?
Yeah, it looks like they just attended a select board meeting that Alex presented at.
Well, and then says attended a Climate Action Planning Committee meeting.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right.
So.
You're right. Yeah, so maybe Alex would remember the person.
I'll reach out to Alex. Let's see what, what else we can get.
We, when we reviewed multiple applications, that was when the committee was first formed in 2023. So I guess it's not surprising that there may have been more interest in the beginning just because it was new and people maybe had more.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Interest that way, but you know, I think, yeah, it would be great to have more. But then again, if we just can learn more about this person to be reassured that they would be a helpful addition to the committee, then I'd be happy to support that, you know?
I can do my best Aaron Bradley impression and say, if you're out there in TB land, please apply for these committees. We have lots of openings. The school committee, we have two. So please apply.
All right. Anything else on that? So I will follow up with Alex as well as Nick on that.
Amanda, if you could mention, just looking at the form itself.
Yeah.
I just looked at the, this, this individual applied back in July, so I pulled up the new form and it doesn't have the Budget Coordinating Committee as an option for volunteering.
Right.
Which could be, could make it.
Right.
Challenging to, to know how to apply.
Right. Yeah, I don't know what the, I don't know what the solicitation, you know, how they, they reached out to people or how it was promoted about these two positions. I know that, you know, sometimes they'll have something in the Milton Times, but for the, the budget piece, I'm not sure how that, how else it was communicated and to your point, how you would apply if it's not on this form. So I'll ask.
That might be some timing because I think they didn't approve officially the Budget Coordination Committee until after, maybe, maybe a little bit after this. So that might just be like a timing issue.
Well, it's on.
It's worth double checking that it's on there now.
The form that's currently on the town of Milton website does not have it.
Oh, the one current, oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
That will make it hard to get applications.
Okay. I'll do that. All right. The next thing we were going to talk about was is the discussion, review of the Milton, I'm sorry, discussion of the 2526 school committee goals. So we had, if we want to bring those up. So we had a discussion at our planning retreat on August 6th and we, we kind of went through and edited the document. I just went through and cleaned up the document that we had done to kind of take out the, the things that we crossed out. But I did think maybe we could start here for a second. So as we're looking through it, we've done draft work around it, we've had discussions around it, but I thought it might be helpful just to kind of take a step back for a moment. Because as we're looking at them and sort of as John was talking about that, you know, sort of that elevator shaft, this idea of making sure that our, our goals as a school committee are aligned with the superintendent's goal. So I didn't go into depth, but really just took into account, just shared the four areas. So it was focus on the classroom, culture and climate, budget stewardship, and DEIB. And then secondarily, just went through the MASC site and just to revisit the school committee areas of responsibility. So this is not to say that we need to have something around each one. Obviously that would be really cumbersome, but recognizing the areas, you know, kind of in that, that stay in our lane idea, but sort of like if we're focusing on certain areas, these are the areas of responsibility for the school committee. So policy finance, staffing, collective bargaining, PD, school councils, advocacy, curriculum governance and communication. So I know some of those we had incorporated previously, but as we're looking through and going through the draft of the goals that we've done to date, it might be helpful just to have those as a reference point, but more, but I think equally as important, if not more so, would be the superintendent's goals to see how our goals align in supporting the superintendent's goals. So the next page is the draft of the goals that we came up with on the 6th. And then we can just go forward and you can just look at it on your screen. And the next page is just, I just captured, just go to the next page, Mark. The next page is the discussion points from the meeting. So these were things that people had brought up, ideas around maybe more, sort of more detailed elements within the goal, if it's information that we're looking for, what that goal might look like. One thing that we might consider as we're doing, doing this is almost having a parking lot or something that, that captures some of these areas. So if there is information around data or if there are things that are deeper within a goal that we want to capture that then might inform a topic on the calendar later, I think it's just a good place to capture that. So, so essentially page two and three are the outcome of our last discussion. If we want to go back there, so it might be a good point, place to just start here. We moved away from sort of the categories and just really focused on the specific goals and then decided at the last point that if we wanted to somehow bucket them, we could, but that would lead with what, we'd lead with the goals first and then revisit that. So I don't know if it would make sense to walk through them individually. Some of them I think are, there are similar themes. And maybe even, you know, if we want to have even in front of us, keeping in front of us, the, the superintendent's goals is, is sort of a placeholder to compare them or to, to align them, that might be helpful.
Big picture, I appreciate the concept of the parking lot. I think I'd like to encourage us to, especially with the superintendent's goals side by side, like I think we need to narrow these down.
Correct, I would agree.
And that doesn't mean we would be eliminating the, the issue, the topic necessarily, but it's the focus. Maybe it's not a goal to be achieved so much as work to do along the way, you know? Bless you.
Bless you. Yeah, and we don't even necessarily have to, I think the idea around the parking lot was not necessarily to talk about it today, but I think it's a great place to capture things that people might find important or want to learn more about, especially as we sort of look at building up the calendar. If there were things, you know, we were talking about the, you know, the data, if there are areas around that, that might be a good place to capture. But, but going up that next level, what's the goal that then would inform the need for the data?
Right.
So, so I agree with starting with the, with the goals and just.
Should we start by bucketing in, into the four categories that John had come up with?
That's a good idea.
Like with academic rigor and budget and DEIB and all of those.
Culture and climate.
Yeah.
Mark, I'm just, the, the contracts piece.
Yeah.
It is an important, budget stewardship is obviously key to that, but I don't want to pigeonhole it there because it's, I think it actually touches all of the goals, honestly, if we're doing that right. So.
Do we want to walk through?
I know we're just doing this for discussion, but.
Yeah.
I think that's almost like its own goal and it's extremely concrete because that is just something we will be doing.
Yeah. Right. And I think it also goes within our responsibilities. So there will be some that don't necessarily strictly fall within that.
I would think that, yeah, recruitment and retention of staff would be one that could go under the DEIB bucket because I think that's the frame in which John has talked about it and they're kind of focused with that department.
Yep. And I do think the one that, I mean, we've talked a lot about communication, that keeping that doesn't necessarily align with those, but it align, I mean, it actually aligns with each of them, right? Communicating around those, but having a goal around communication. The one, we, we kept it on here just because we, I know that we're going to have more of conversation around it, is around the, we just kept the conduct hiring of any superintendent, knowing that we're going to have further discussion, hopefully at our next school committee meeting. I think if we, that under the other, Mark, evaluate the activities being taken, that would be other, and I think either, that under the culture and climate.
Yeah. So please disregard this if it's not helpful to the conversation, but the buckets, what we're currently using as like category headings, those are goals unto themselves that the superintendent has set.
Correct.
Our main job, I believe, is to make sure that our goals in this context are to make sure that our goals are aligned with the superintendent's goals. We have different roles and responsibilities, so our goals, I don't, will not be the same exact goals by definition, I think. So I, I worry a little bit about like boxing ourselves into these as categories because they're not categories, they're actual goals that the superintendent has set. I think I would want to make sure that none of the goals we're setting contradict any of these four goals. I would want to make sure that each of the goals we're setting either directly support one of these goals or more, or fulfill a function of our like role as a school committee.
Right.
But.
Right, there's alignment, but not.
Yeah, I, I think we want to use the superintendent's goals as a lens.
Right.
To check our goals, but not necessarily as the organizing framework for our goals. I think.
So for example.
I don't know if that makes sense, but.
Yeah, but I mean, like, so for example, would you say, you know, support academic excellence and student achievement? You know, if that would like for just using that as.
Yeah, or, or what. Maybe one of our goals is, I don't, again, the vert, we've discussed like the importance of identifying the right verb for the goal. To me, one of the school committee's goals is to provide support and accountability for the superintendent in working towards the goals that have been, that the superintendent has set. That can be a goal of the school committee, perhaps, you know, slash, maybe there are some that we do share, the budget stewardship, clearly there's a superintendent role to that goal, there's a school committee role to that goal. So that would be one that we. I'm just thinking out loud because this is several goals under each which are actually our own, I don't know, I'll stop.
Well, I mean, this was just to kind of bucket it in. Coming with is aligned with what John has in mind, but I think we can kind of simplify some of these. I think we're getting into the nitty gritty of like the ELA curriculum was a big part of our session last spring. So I think that's something that we want to see through, happen and see progress on it and updates and so on and so forth. But that's getting kind of nitty gritty, but I don't know, maybe if there's a, just summarize this into kind of, you know, bigger topics where all of these are areas that obviously even in our presentation today, you know, the first and second bullet point kind of addressed. So I feel like we're, we're there, we just need to maybe simplify the language on some of this and simplify. They don't necessarily need to be under any bucket, but that we could have like five main goals that we have.
Yes. Right.
Also worth noting, I don't know if you have anything to add here, but these goals that we took from the presentation today are, were exclusively designed to be teaching and learning goals, which, but that was the context through which those goals were presented to us and I think our work extends beyond just that. So that, you know, they're, they're imperfect as an organizing structure.
But they're, but I think that they're John's, I think they're the, I don't think they're necessarily just about teaching and learning. I think those are the, if four goals, like if you're looking at the budget stewardship or the DEIB, it informs a lot of things, but I think this presentation was around learning, but I think you could take those same goals and have a presentation on something else and still have those goals aligned. Am I correct or incorrect?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, culture and climate. Towards, you know, the, the, everything leads to the classroom, right? Is that all roads that lead to Milton, that used to be the T-shirt on Dorcheston. All of it leads towards the classroom. But there are pieces of this that I think that the, for a process point, putting all the, the goals, all the, all the statements that you have in different buckets, to Anna's point, now salient points of all those things that are underneath focusing the classroom and come up with a school committee level goal that supports the language that you're using in each one of those individual goals. That would be the one or two goals that the school committee has that's going to direct support, have expectations or accountability for focusing on the classroom. And that could be any, you know, the ones that you have up there, evaluate the activities or the district presented to achievement gaps, you can ask us to report out on that through our work in the classroom, you know, or our work. I, I think that once you get these into buckets, the next role, the next task could be to just synthesize however many bullets are underneath those into goals that you feel strongly about that overarching view and expectation for the superintendent and for the district.
Right.
Related to those things. And then there's just stuff you have to do. You have to do the collective bargaining. To have a budget that is fulfilled and have a fiscal year that's balanced. But again, those all come under stewardship. So just reshaping the language in a. Be based at the top of the, the elevators, this, you're setting the tone, I'm fulfilling my obligations at my level and we're having that work go down to principals and then into the classroom. And that, that's, that's hopefully how this can be one line of expectation being followed through from school committee to superintendent to building to classroom to.
John, one, like, the, the idea of a goal advanced the selection and implementation of an improved K-5 year. That, I'm sitting here and I'm, I agree with you, Anna, like that was a priority. That, I'm sitting here, and I'm, I agree with you, Anna, like, that was a priority, we worked on that. We were able to get the funding to support that. I don't, I don't actually know if, or I kind of am questioning whether selection and implementation, like, that actually isn't our job.
I think that would be like a presentation that you would just kind of give us an update on. We have to kind of simplify those four bullet points into just something for us where all of those fit, but not into as much detail, but I feel like the first two were covered tonight, you know, and then vision of a graduate, that could be a presentation that comes up with part of the MHS site council presentation or something, you know, or maybe like, if those are the questions that we have, I think the presentations that we see are kind of based on that. I mean, that's how I kind of see that, these are areas that we're interested in learning more. Our goal, our goal is like larger, it kind of encompasses a lot of different things, I don't know, that's how I see it.
What if we expanded the first bullet? Not just regular reviews of relevant student data, but, and key initiatives, I don't, or something to that effect? That we could identify for ourselves what the this year, one of them might be the progress toward the new literacy curriculum. Maybe even the vision of a graduate is one of those type, like aligning state requirements on competency determination, like, if we just expanded it, is that kind of what you're talking about, Anna, like broadening the goal to just be able to, like, include things that aren't named in the goal per se?
My question would be, why wouldn't we name it in the goal? Like, these are goals just for this year, and so it is what we are looking to, so if like, if they're not selecting, we're not reviewing the ELA curriculum, we're not sitting down with teachers around the implementation of the ELA curriculum, right? That is not our job, just as it's not our job to, you know, every process review, like, that is John and Katie, they do a great job, and we like review that, we have opportunities where we dipstick and look into it and provide feedback and questions. I think that same thing, in my mind, is selection, I think at the very top, we even say, like, curriculum is a part of our responsibilities, right? Selecting, like, ultimately voting to approve curriculum. So to me, if we're saying, one of the things we really from John on this year is that ELA curriculum, and like, how is that going in terms of the selection? Then like, to make sure that is a focus of in my mind, it then makes it very clear by putting that within our goals. Our broad goal is student learning, right, students, the focus on the classroom, you know, the kind of alignment, focus on within that context, it's, you know, whatever instructional initiatives we kind of want to hear about, to learn about as a committee, and see that those are that's at least how I was thinking about it.
I think my question with that, if, so, if you're saying like sort of things within the goal, I think one of my questions would be sort of, if we're talking about like things that we're learning looking at data, and Carla talking about things sort of remaining flat, right? That's, that's new, and so for example, support the enhancement of effective instructional practices by implementing regular reviews of student data and something else, then that, I think support the different initiatives that they're taking, that are being taken, and we're learning about them, but we're not being so specific. I just, I almost fear being it's almost like we, in some cases, and maybe this isn't appropriate to say, I think in some cases, we, there's things we don't know what we don't know, and I feel like a new eye on data or a new eye looks allows us to be flexible, but we all recognize that goal of having, you know, having rigorous academics, really focusing on the outcomes of students, that sort of thing. So I just don't know if getting really granular within our goals is almost, almost more limiting. Does that make sense?
This conversation is starting to feel like an abstraction to me a little bit. So, in the presentation earlier tonight, Carla listed out five priorities that we all said we liked a lot.
Right, their goals and then their priorities.
To me, it feels sufficient to say that, like, on a purely academic side, we want to regularly towards those priorities. Period. Like, that to me is, just to make, just to put like a specific recommendation on the table, like, that to me is sufficient. The ELA curriculum into there, because we've sort of identified it, I'm comfortable with that.
But, I mean, I think what you're saying is great, and it's pretty broad, too, so all things that we've discussed over the last year, I would say, like the ELA curriculum, but if there are other things John and Carla want to bring up that are tied to those and would help us better understand those we're kind of checking in and seeing progress in those areas that are directly tied to teaching and learning and academic rigor, and closing the achievement gap, and all of those things, I mean, I think we should recommendations we look forward to, but we don't want to limit and just say, these are the only areas we're going to focus on.
No, but it's just saying, I, to me
Right, so it could be anything, yeah.
Yeah, annual, just like, at the end of the year, if we, if we did these, let's say we end up with five goals, we achieve those five goals, okay, school committee, we met our goals for the year, but that, I don't, yeah, I agree with you, it's not anything else.
Right, right, right.
Totally.
Yeah, so these are just things that we know of, to your point, and then if there are other things that would be helpful to us, we would love to learn more.
Yeah, I just, I think it, to me, would be helpful for us to be on the same page of like, other than if we just want to have a broad statement of we want to support the learning of kids, right? We want to have good schools, we want to operate, have a strong operations for the district, and be a good school committee. Very high-level, broad goals that like probably we can all agree with, I don't know how that really drives our work on a kind of, from an agenda-setting standpoint, from a like informed presentations that they're going to want based upon it, that's just so broad that I worry it's not actually helpful, and so I think a broader category at the top, but naming a couple things that like we're actually wanting to get done this year, whether that's, you know, I, you know, negotiating is one of the things we're going to have to get, like, that's a really easy one to then say, okay, at the end of the year, did we do that? The ELA curriculum, great, like, was that advanced this year? Like, that's an easy one that we can be like, hey, did we do a good job of kind of moving this along? And I think that just puts us at least on the same page as a committee, and then also makes us kind of our position pretty clear for the and the vice chair and the superintendent as they kind of work to construct a a year-long course of study essentially for us to like get that information, that ensures we kind of help meet. I just worry about being too broad.
But could we almost have like the parking lot page where we have all the areas that discuss them, whether it's at our governance meetings, like, hey, I think a presentation on this would be really helpful based on what could that be, where like the meat of it goes disappear? So that we, you know, the six of us know, like, okay, we're all aligned, we want to know more about these things, but that can be more general. Just trying to
Yeah, that's sort of, that's what I was thinking when I was saying like taking those ideas, because I think there is some of that, that as you develop the calendar, like, we have that parking lot, and then when we and we're looking at the long-term calendar for the year, that those, those come in, those come into play. So are there certain things like that, like the ELA curriculum, that I think that that's, there's that's where you get into the meat of it?
I said that, and it was like, well, what about all these other things? I agree, I just, I was trying to find a way to summarize, there's a number of things that we have listed here that are focused on academic progress.
Right.
And I was just trying to find a way to summarize that without having a goal be bloated with a whole bunch of additional topics. I do think, I would be a very happy school committee member if we had this, something like that one in purple, having a balanced budget, and producing an FY27 budget that makes sense like we have down here, contract negotiations. Like, those three, I think, are a great starting point, and maybe we agree we want a couple others, but then it's not to the exclusion of anything else, but those three specific goals, I feel like, cover our most important core work. John, sorry, I thought
No, I think you're all heading in the right direction of just kind of synthesize, so starting with culture and climate or budget stewardship first, because those might be the easier ones. Something like the school committee supports the budget stewardship of the Milton Publix through schools, through the management of the department, school department, and operating a balanced budget for the current year, and partnering with school boards, but so that's, that's one big picture goal, right? So that's the, the budget stewardship, that takes the, that's basically, you know, synthesizing those two statements in a active goal-like language. And something similar for culture and climate would be, you know, the school committee will support the culture and climate of the public schools through its work with the superintendent in communicating with the community and engaging the community, blah, 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 you know, so there's the second big picture one, and I do think that the focus on the classroom is more complicated than that, and I do agree that there might need to be a couple of sub-bullets underneath Nathan's kind of big picture, support the enhancement of affectional instructional practices by implementing regular reviews of programs, assessment, student data, that are, and/or initiatives that are being taken on by the district this school year, as exemplified by early literacy, you know, the high school determination, you know, just list a couple of them, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to bring other things to your attention. I think that those are the focus areas for that year.
Right.
And that way, you know, so the focus in the classroom might have a couple of sub-bullets to clarify the expectation, and to ensure that they're brought to you at this table in order to be reviewed, assessed, and discussed. But I think that that, the other two can be more, more the way that we just described. And I, and I, I don't want to leave our equity work out of this, but, you know, our work is to try to embed that into everything that we do, and not always have it as a separate, you know, body of work that happens externally to the, the community of learners and staff that we have, so I think a general statement on equity being embedded into the areas of, all areas of our work with staff and students and community, et cetera, some sort of aspirational goal around that being embedded into our work. I think it's important to have an equity goal in the school committee's goals, as I think it's important to have it in my goals.
I like that.
And if this was happening, and I'd say this with a little bit of humor, but when you put goals forward, then you then have to say how you completed those goals. So the school committee, like a superintendent or like a principal, has to provide artifacts or demonstrate how that goal has been met. So those will be met by, you are requesting a presentation on the early literacy and marking that as an artifact to how you represented that we met that goal. So at the end of the year, you can, you know, evaluate your own work by saying, we had two, we had two presentations on the literacy timeline, and the work, and the, and the development, and the choice of our literacy model moving forward. So when you assess yourself, you can actually fill in what, what happened during the year to demonstrate that you actually made progress towards that goal. Or, you know, and that's incumbent on me to put those things forward, but your overarching responsibility is to make sure that I'm meeting that, that obligation to you. Is this document live from viewers at home to be able to see?
It's, we're projecting it.
No, the, I'm not screen sharing currently, actually.
Oh, okay, I thought you were.
It just might be helpful for the public to be able to see the work that's being done, right?
Amanda, are you hoping we can like vote on these at our next meeting?
This one, or maybe the next one, or the following, depending on how far along we get. I feel like if, I'm not sure, I mean, if we think we feel, can get to draft language tonight.
Sorry, I mean, I would, I don't know. It would be nice to be able to get these done, so it's not October when we're approving annual goals.
I would agree. So do we want to specifically look, if we're looking at that first goal, for example, regularly evaluate progress towards the FY26 goal, do we want to put in the examples now?
Should we do FY26 teaching and learning goals? Since that was, because that particular one has to do with the classroom, and then
Goals and priorities, yep.
And and then we can put the examples in, and I think the goal at the end of the day for us is the same, which is to increase academic rigor and close, you know, with the supports that students need, and then obviously closing the achievement gap. I think that's kind of the end goal for us.
Yeah, I mean, to me, under that, I'd love to see a specific like statement around, you know, like, I think John said, something around like the monitoring of the district's progress on the implementation of a new ELA curriculum. Just again, because I think that provides clarity and provides, you know, ease of kind of evaluation at the end to say, like, did we do that or not? I also, I, the one I think is a larger conversation that I, I put on there, and would love for us to focus on, but I think it, I don't know where everybody else is at, is just the MHS kind of course of study graduation requirements. I think that is both within the context of the competency determination, although the competency determination is such a short timeline, we have to have that established before the end of the calendar year, voted on by the school committee, so like, that's not going to be a robust process. So, I think it's even beyond that, we're going to have to put something in place that just meets the qualifications that the state is putting out for the competency determination. But then I just think that is a huge opportunity for us to look at our high school course of study more holistically around, you know, what are our graduation requirements? Currently, they're not aligned to MasCor, why is that not true? You know, there are huge budgetary implications for that, if we're requiring more foreign language courses, the whole idea of more financial literacy coursework within high school or other things, like, I don't know the last time that was significantly looked at in the district, maybe it was pretty recent, but I do think that would be in my mind, that'd be something that would excite me. I do think, I'll hedge all of that to say, like, it really doesn't make sense probably for us to do unless there is a, feels like there's capacity and energy on the superintendent's side and like the district-level staff side. side and like the district level staff side. So I'd be interested in hearing John's thoughts. But then also, I do think that also ties into our piece around the superintendent, because I think that is, that is more than going to be a kind of one-year process. You know, it's going to take a lot of time to kind of delve into that and choose. And then you've got to figure out the implementation timeline, which will be obviously over several years as.
So we will have a presentation on the competency work at the high school and that proposal's already been drafted by the high school principal, Karen Cahill. We reviewed a copy of that today. The MasCor conversation about being in alignment with that. We, we do have alignment with that and we have some documentation to demonstrate that conversation as well. And just generally speaking about the program of studies, I think is, is definitely connected to that conversation. So, you know, the program of studies is on the calendar for, I think, January, February of every year. Talking about what would like to be seen in that. But I do believe that there's some tasks that we need to complete. To your point, Mark, have them in front of everybody, have that process, have that discussion, where it connects with the bigger picture of program of studies and what that means for certain types of courses. I know that the high school team has some ideas that they'd like to put on the table as well. So we will be planning to be in front of you with Karen Cahill and her team around the competency determination, the language around some new courses aligning with the DESI expectation for language, and a couple of other pieces. So that work will be in front of you this, this fall. Maybe not as comprehensively from a program of studies point of view as you may be thinking and have been talking about prior to my arrival, but we can certainly continue that conversation and, and start with the things that we have to get done and then begin to build a process of how we want to coordinate that through the program of studies. But I think we do have a couple of things to share that may inform that, that bigger discussion. And it's work we have to get done anyway, so we will be with you in the fall on that.
Yeah, I appreciate that enough. If we already meet MasCor, take that back, apologies, I didn't think we did. But excited to hear more about that. I guess the, the program of study presentation, at least from my experience the last two years, has just been, here's what it is, vote forward. Like, there's no process for like feedback or conversation on like, from a higher level, what do we want our high schoolers being able to do as they leave, right? And what is the research out there on like how we best set them up for success after they leave us? And I don't think we've had, I don't feel like we've had that conversation. I don't feel like the course of study has really been the place to do it, at least again the last two years in which it's been. Maybe that's been different historically or in other districts and so it can be a kind of a more robust conversation. But it has felt to me at least more just like, this is one of the things we sign off on every year and kind of move forward and not really evaluate.
I can have that conversation with the high school principal. I want to, and Carla and I do this every day, we want to be very clear on what we can do in one year and what we want to establish as things that we can get done in a way that we complete it with integrity and completion. And there might be some tasks that we need to initiate and start and hand off or just set the foundation for. And that, that's usually going to be, and we had this conversation with one of our curriculum folks today, just a curriculum review cycle for all of our curriculums. When we talk about scope and sequence and the integrity of the content, is it connected to the standards? We had, I didn't comment on when both of you brought it up earlier, but that's a bigger picture conversation that we need to have in front of the community and whether or not that's something that we can take on in this year as it is a multi-year process. We don't want to be the fourth administrative team that provides them a, you know, a cycle of work to do and then leaves them for, have someone else come in for that cycle of work. So we're trying to establish what we think are one and two-year things that we can influence and really do with integrity and then leave some of that to whoever comes in next. Because this, this team has felt the disappointment of being brought up and brought down and brought up and brought down for the last five years. And I think that you're seeing that tiredness reflected in maybe a program of studies that may just have been not examined in a way that you wanted to in the past, to be very blunt. Do you know what I mean? And I think that that's, that's where we are. That's why we started off by saying that to every parent, we're focusing on teaching and learning because third grade's really important and we want to make sure that we address that right off the bat, because those kids only get third grade once. These bigger picture things are as well as important. The courses, the program of studies at the high school is a really big deal. It shapes everything that we're working backwards towards, right, from middle school to, so I understand the importance, but we're, we're trying to shape these things from a time perspective and a completion perspective and not wanting to disappoint folks by leaving anything undone.
No, and I really appreciate that perspective because I think that's, I'm glad that we're prioritizing that, like what can we get done in the next year or two? I think that's so important. I think just in terms of just setting expectations for us as well as, you know, just all these goals that you have set, you know, and, and working towards that, because I think all of it is tied to that. And I, I could be wrong, but I know with like program of studies, I know there's like budget limitations on things too that impact what is offered, because I know there are a lot of great ideas, but then we're always asked to pare that back because of our budget limitations. So I want to be mindful of that too. So I, I'm just, you know, I'm just grateful that both of you hit the ground running in terms of what can we get done in the shortest amount of time possible and make the most impact. And I appreciate that very much.
The, the program of studies, because it's an annual discussion, I will speak to the principal about how can, how can we actually enhance that dialogue instead of just having it be a sign-off? That might be a good start, Mark, in order to provide some sort of a process of discussing and, you know, highlighting and/or what's important and why. And let me look into that kind of strategy and process for that annual. It happens every year and if we want to do it a little differently in order to get some of those questions discussed in the public and in front of the community about what's important. I hear you loud and clear and let me explore that a little bit. That's a January, February thing.
So do we want to, for the first one, to Nathan's point, if we want to nail this down? Do we want to be specific about the bullet initiatives that we want to include? And do the evaluate in the teacher, teaching and learning goal?
It seems like the literacy curriculum is, you know, if, if the conversation we just had about courses of study and high school sort of competency determination is come, plays out as we just described, seems like the literacy curriculum is the outstanding one. And I'm wondering, this whole conversation is making me wonder, John and Carla, where literacy curriculum implementation fits into your priorities? And we don't, we don't have to have that discussion tonight, but if it, if it, if it has a place in your five or six priorities there, I'm just wondering.
Yeah, so we had a meeting with Kat DeRoche today. We put on, bringing her in the second meeting in October to provide you with an update from the presentation that she had in the spring, so she can give you the context of how this came about, where she is right now with her team, and where she plans on going between now and June. We're planning on bringing her back in February of this year to the school committee to identify the product or the, the curriculum that they're going to choose in the process by which they, they're creating a rubric right now and how they're going to measure that. And then how they're going to put that in place for summer PD and implementation in September. So we already have that all scoped out. She will be here in the second meeting in October and the second meeting in February.
That's great.
And then that was a direct result, Mark, of your email asking, and so that's exactly what we'll deliver.
Okay. Appreciate that.
Similarly, with the competency determination, that we'll do the exact same thing for that as well.
Is there anything else we want to add to that? So Nathan added, including advising on selection of new K to five ELA curriculum and competency determination.
Maybe not advising, monitoring the selection of the new? I'm getting into the verbs again, but.
All right.
Yeah.
And monitoring.
Supporting, monitoring, one of the two.
Supporting selection.
Okay. So can I just delete these then?
Yep. I don't know what this thing is. Second one just feels a little wordy.
Maybe it's through partnership with town boards.
Well, but. These are not the same, so. I think we just need to sup, I agree with, like, we're not managing a balanced budget for this year through partnership.
Right. Do.
That furthers, maybe just furthers priorities.
What if we, just a thought, if we land on the three, the bucket areas and then pull together a couple of people to
Wordsmith.
Wordsmith them
Mm-hmm.
For the next couple of days before then, and then share them prior to the next meeting? And then we can have a review and vote? Does that make sense? And then if there's feedback on them, you can just send it individually, but we can work on it that way so that, I think that might get us to a better place. But if we all agree that, right now, that these are the areas in which we want to focus for the budget stewardship. We have DEIB, we have the contract negotiation, so teaching and learning, budget, DEIB, and contract negotiations. Is there anything that we're missing? Did, I'm just going to throw out, last year we had one around communication. Do we want to do anything around communication? That would be the only other.
I would like, I mean, I personally am in favor of having a goal that names communication for the school committee. I think we've made a lot of progress as a district in improving communication. There are a number of concrete things that we are now doing that we were not doing. There are still additional things we can do, the district can do. We've been hearing around transportation and so forth, but I think there are yet and still more things the school committee can be doing. And we've stayed very busy on like urgent things that we've had to address over these past couple of years. We, we haven't really been able to kind of think more proactively strategically about community engagement as a school committee. Again, we've done good things and we have work to do. So I understand, like, if this, maybe that is. I know in the past, we've had like forums and things and for, to communicate with the community and something that we haven't quite landed on is like, is there, like, is it on the school committee page? Is it part of the superintendent's updates? Like, you know, like where do we share information? I think that's kind of where we're
Yeah, we have.
Not been able to
Exactly.
You know, kind of refine what works or what makes most sense? Or are we just adding more to, you know?
We've tried a lot of things and we haven't landed on like a.
Yes.
Yeah.
I just, keeping in the theme of being consistent with the four goals, like we're trying to do, I think it would be something to the effect of embedding the goal and just saying, to support the, the district's culture and climate, the school committee will continue to be proactive in their communication and engagement, you know, and just use the line, you know?
Yeah.
Just explicitly just embedding, you know, combining the category, because what you're doing when you want to communicate better is to engage the community, inform the community, be transparent as effectively as you can. And so that, that fits under culture and climate. So you just combine that sentence.
That makes sense.
Now you have, you have, you're kind of all set.
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. That's good. Okay. So if we're good with those, we'll figure out.
Okay.
I can reach out, figure out who wants to help finesse the wording on them. We'll have them in the folder. People can share feedback individually.
To you.
To me. And then we will have them at the next school committee for a vote.
Great.
Sounds good?
Perfect.
Excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good to see everybody. The next, now we're on the finance subcommittee report, Mark?
Yes, finance subcommittee report. So we had another meeting this morning. Shout out to Katie, once again, kind of a great meeting. She provided us a presentation on transportation, financial aspects of the transportation, kind of feedback we've been getting from the community, some of the challenges, shared that presentation with y'all for the community at large. That meeting is recorded, as are all our finance subcommittee meetings. That's been sent to MATV. I'm sure they'll post it at some point in the next, today, tomorrow, next couple of days. So appreciate them. John, I think you are continuing also like posting, we talked about posting those things on the website under the kind of the budget stuff as resources for the community. So that will also be there in addition to the MA, the link will be there in addition to the MATV YouTube page. Again, generally, kind of high-level things around that are just the, the ongoing financial challenge of related to the cost of those buses that were not able to be included despite the school committee's request to the select board and originally not included in the override budget. And so therefore going from 12 buses to 11 buses. Some initial conversations on some of the things that was actually brought up in public comments around MBTA partnership, you know, other ways in which outside of school financial resources, which are, as we know, kind of limited and tight and unable to kind of accommodate additional buses in the current fiscal year, what are the things else we of accommodate additional buses in the current fiscal year, what are the things else we can do? I know John mentioned Katie's looking at a grant for bicycle racks, things like that to kind of encourage more ridership. Potentially, that helps actually some families choose that and maybe open seats up on the bus. Those things will have to be seen. And then had some initial conversations on, you know, what would be the financial impact to next year, as we talk both about the budget and also talk about the fee-based structure of, of the fees that are collected for transportation. I guess just a high note is, you know, we've gotten some feedback around, we collect fees, why don't we just collect more fees? The fees cover 22% of the cost of kind of all of our transportation in order to fully have them cover, you know, it'd be going up from $325, I think they are now, to thousands of dollars per family, per, not family, per rider. So the cost is, would be really, really high and probably insurmountable. So anyways, began having those conversations, look forward to any feedback folks have, additional questions they have, and I'm sure it's something we will continue to be talking about. Another thing that came up, the finance committee, just the budget coordination committee, I believe that's what its official name is, is meeting on Friday for the first time, 8:00 AM. So Nathan and I will be at that as the elected representatives from the school committee and to the public. There's still a kind of public seat on that, if you have interest. I don't know how to apply, actually, right now, as Nathan flagged, we don't quite know, so.
Reach out to Nick Milano.
I mean, you could email Nick Milano. Email Nick Milano directly and tell him you want to be on there. John and Katie will also be at that meeting as, again, select board reps, one member of the planning board, and so we'll kind of kick off that process and certainly share back with y'all what comes out of that. I'll remind everybody that that is a non-voting entity, it has no actual approval power or authority in any way. It's just a formal mechanism for us to make sure we're having those regular conversations with the select board, with the warrant committee who are represented, and ensure that that is, you know, going smoother than it did kind of at the start of last year. So excited about that. I believe those are the primary updates, but anything else, Amanda, Nathan, that I missed?
I just wanted to speak to the Mr. Herren's concerns, and he has stayed with us after the meeting, so I just want to address that we are exploring crossing guards to, we're doing some of the soft things or the smaller things that might add up to some support. We will review attendance on every bus to see if the absentee rate would allow us to add a couple more people off the waitlist. We are reviewing whether or not we can open the pairs up a little earlier for those folks who may need to drop off earlier because they're on the waitlist in order to get to work on time, and we can staff that with somebody that can receive the children of waitlist families. We are looking into working with the police around, are there any spots for crossing guards that aren't now in place because those students didn't walk before, and now we might have some different corners to cover? We are doing small things like reviewing our bike racks and trying to encourage kids to bike, and as Nick, as Mark pointed out, really taking a look at the next year budget process to find out what it will look like, what needs to be put in place for bus services. And if you watched the tape of this morning's meeting, a very, very concrete conversation about increasing fees or increase, increasing ridership and what's our goal for how many riders do we want to support? Do we want to set a goal for ridership? Are we going to be 100% district? Are we going to try to be a 95% district? What is it cost-effective if we go to 100%? Are we going to have empty buses? So the real dialogue about what that looks like for FY '27 will be a richer conversation. That does not help the two Herren girls get to school on time tomorrow, right? But we are looking at it from a bigger picture perspective and also trying to see if there's some small base hits this year that we can try to implement that may take some folks off the waitlist, or at least make that commute easier for families who can drop off a little earlier at the middle school, because you can actually do that at the high school without any, they already do that. So we are looking at it from a right-now perspective and also a longer perspective, and I don't want to have, I want to make sure that you feel like your words were heard and that we are exploring some of those things actively.
I know it's not public comment, but to say, I think the world of what you all do. I mentioned my role as an educator because I think the world of administration and the right, I will just say, again, the challenge is that not just the ERM roles, but 114 other children facing getting to school every day, is they are significant. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And thank you all for your work on that.
And thank you for talking tonight.
Thank you for coming. School building committee report?
School building committee has not met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is on the 15th. However, we have, as we talked about at the last meeting, a warrant article that's come out of the school building committee, voted unanimously to support and put that over to the select board for inclusion on the fall town meeting warrant. Sean Warwick and I attended a warrant committee meeting, it was last week, last Monday. I was there mostly as just moral support. Sean did all the heavy lifting, per usual, presented that warrant article to the warrant committee. They voted on it, actually, that night and voted to support or recommend its passage to town meeting, which is great news, so that is moving through. It's on our agenda tonight to vote, not on the warrant article itself, but in support or not, I guess, of the, of that warrant article by school building committee. That's typically been something that has been asked of the school committee related to any school building committee articles. By town meeting is kind of what is the school committee's stance on this article? Do we support it or not? And so in that vein, just wanted to put on the agenda for us to discuss, hopefully vote on, to provide that clarity for town meeting and the upcoming all-town meeting. The warrant article language was forwarded to everybody, I believe. Also, the copy of the presentation Sean made to the warrant committee was included in this week's materials. That has some information on kind of typical things he has shared around enrollments, things like that, and the big piece is the timeline, right, which really just walked through the warrant committee as to why the request for additional time within the reverter clause, right? The warrant article is designed to extend the reverter clause from five years to add an additional five years, move it to 10 years, and that's just because of the time crunch that we are seeing with the delay caused by us moving with MSBA. You know, kind of Sean's best-case guesses by pulling timelines from other towns kind of take us right to that five-year mark with very little wiggle room, and so instead of waiting a couple of years until that's a problem, the idea is, you know, looking at it now for any votes and saying, okay, let's give the committee a little bit more time to make sure that we're not kind of running up against this hard, hard deadline, but still include, keeping the reverter clause in case the town decides not to move forward with the school project at some point.
Questions? So the reverter clause would extend it till when? What would be the...
It would be five more years.
From 2028?
That's a great question. I'm pretty sure it started, it was when the land swap passed, which was...
For 2020, okay, so middle of 2023.
Yeah, so I think it's 2023 is when that, so...
So it ends in 2028, so then it's five more years after that.
Yes, it'll be 2033.
And Mark, given that the warrant committee voted to approve, voted in favor of this article, and the language in the document, we can expect most likely that this to say, recommended that the town vote yes.
Yes, they didn't vote.
They're in favor, whatever the language is.
I think Jay would clarify that they did not vote to approve it, they voted, yeah, they recommended, they voted to recommend passage, right? Or whatever.
They're going to recommend that town meeting...
Vote to approve.
Vote to approve it.
Yes.
Okay.
If there are no questions, I can move forward with making the motion. We can second, and there's still time for discussion if anybody has it, but I'll make a motion to support the school building committee's warrant article submission to the 2025 fall town meeting that seeks to extend the land swap reverter clause by an additional five years.
Second.
Any discussion?
You mentioned the language, is that, was that in the email? Because I think you only, I mean, at least the one from the 25th is only the PowerPoint, the present, the PDF.
I think the SBC Fall 2025 Reverter in the...
Oh, in the agenda?
In the folder, in the school committee folder, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay.
Sent it out previously when the school committee first passed it.
That's fine.
It's that one? No, it's not, it's that one.
Oh, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, so the, the language in this warrant article is extensive. It is the same language as the 2023 May town meeting language. It's just the exact same thing. The only thing that has changed is that date.
It's in section two on page three. So it's June 30, 2033.
The top of, yeah, top of page three.
Okay, perfect.
So that is, the only part that is changed is really just that date, 2033. Any other discussion questions? Okay. All in favor? Unanimous.
Excellent.
That is it for the school building committee.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, so there were two sets of minutes in the folder. One is for the June 16th meeting, and the second was for the August 20th meeting. Everybody's read the moment of motion. I'll make a motion for both of them. Motion is moved to approve the Milton School Committee meeting minutes dated June 16th, 2025, and August 20th, 2025.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? And then the last thing that we have tonight is next meeting agenda items. So I have two. One is, we would have the facilities meeting on...
We'll have facilities and policy.
And policy, okay. Facilities. And then we are also working to get a representative from MAS C to come and speak about the questions around extending the superintendent's contract for year two.
And then, I know we have to reaffirm the members from facilities, so I think maybe at our meeting, we can ask the mem, I'll put it on the agenda to ask the members if they want to continue, and then we can bring back on Wednesday and vote on it, or like...
Okay.
Is that...
So vote for member...
Just, just for a process.
Okay.
And we'll have the other, potentially, these other committees back on our agenda.
School building will have Mets, finances, meeting, and then the...
No, I meant the subcommittee advisory committees.
Sorry.
The climate and the...
Right, yeah, oh, yeah.
Oh, the votes for the...
Budget, yeah.
Oh, the community member.
Correct, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the budget coordination committee report. I don't know if that, it's technically a separate committee. I don't know if we should go under finance or just write after it, but...
Okay, we'll do that. Anything else?
We're going to vote on all of those.
And we're going to vote on the, yes, we are. Vote on the goals. And John, you're not here next, you're not here on the 17th, correct?
I will be at my daughter Olivia's wedding.
Ah, congratulations.
At a time.
That's great. All right, anything else? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? You adjourn, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.